Good evening, and good evening and welcome to the Southbridge School Committee meeting on Tuesday, September 25th, 2012. Let's start with the pledge allegiance. Thank you. Agenda item number two is public input. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak this evening? Anyone from the public wishing to speak? If there's someone from the public, please come to the podium, state your name and address. And just a reminder to let you know that the school committee does not respond. We're here to listen and see what you have to say. Sophie could just tell us who you are.
My name's Laura La Boye, and I'm a resident of Southbridge. Sorry, I'm out of breath. Couple concerns that I had, that I did call a couple of members of. I had called Mr. Ely on some safety issues at West Street. I was called a liar, pretty much that I didn't call him. It was the second call. So, he was the one that told me to call the principal and advise him. So, I called him back, and he says, I said, "You're lying. I called you on this." He says, "The safety of our children after they leave school property is not his problem. They're still on school property with crosswalks." So, he says that's the police department's issue. So, I did contact Chief Charette, and I know a couple of members did. And, uh, sorry. And, um, he was taking that up as, you know, advised, but I was advised to pull my children out of the district, which I, as a parent, just brought them back into the district, three children. So, my concern is that, you know, we're not getting any feedback from, you know, schools and, and, actually, the principal's just gotten ahold of me. But, there's a lot of issues going on with food, busing, capacity, lockers, you know. So, my issue is, why should I keep my children in the school? You know, I'm trying to keep them in the school, but if, if people aren't going to cooperate, it's not fair. My other issue is there is a licensing issue in this town. A speech pathologist hasn't been holding her license for 10 years. How does that go? If that's not just Mr. Ely's issue, you know, maybe we've had other superintendents, but how does that get passed by? I personally have a child in an IEP, and I don't think it's fair that that person's not licensed writing on it or giving suggestions to write on it. Thank you.
Thank you. And we will be looking into all those items, and hopefully, we'll be able to have you an answer for you. Is there anyone else from the public who'd like to speak this evening? Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move on to agenda item number three. We'll call the meeting to order. Roll call, please. Excused.
Present.
President.
McGlaughlin.
Present.
Dr. O'Leary.
Absent.
Mrs. Principe.
Oh, he's en route. Sorry, he's en route. Mrs. Principe is excused.
Mrs. Woodruff.
Present.
Four present, two excused, one absent.
Thank you. Next agenda item, number five, approval of minutes, the regular school committee minutes. Do we have a motion?
No.
Thank you. In a second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any corrections or errors at this time? Mrs. Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't really have a recommendation or a correction. I just have a question. Agenda item number five, number one, at that particular instance, I was wondering about the correctness of a, of the language of a motion that was made at a prior school committee, and you were to watch the tape, and I just wanted to confirm that a tape was watched so that we do have the correct wording of a motion that was made at that prior meeting.
Unfortunately, I was unable to come over here and watch that tape.
Okay.
I believe that the motion that was made was the correct motion, but I will make sure that tomorrow I come here and I watch that tape and get an answer. I apologize for that.
That's okay. Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Any other corrections, errors, comments? Seeing none. All those in favor? Any staying or opposed? Minutes pass. Agenda item number six has been added so that I can make a few announcements at the meetings, and so that would be chairwoman's announcements. I do have two announcements this evening. I just want to again remind all the members that each person will have two terms to speak towards each agenda item. The length of that time, I'm not putting a length to it, so you can ask as many questions at that time that you would like, and then when you're done, the next person will move on. The other reminder I'd like to make tonight is for, it's a school committee policy that I want to bring and just read and remind everyone about the visitation to schools policy. It's come to my attention that we might need a slight reminder, so I'm going to just read that right now. This is in file BHC, and it reads, "School committee members interested in visiting schools or classrooms will inform the superintendent of such visits and make arrangements for visitation through the principals of the various schools. Official visits by committee members will occur only under committee authorization." So, I just wanted to remind everybody of that policy, and that's all that I have this evening. Yes, Mrs. Donovan?
Thank you. Just a question. I know I volunteer in my daughter's classroom on a weekly basis. Does that fall under that? Is that considered?
No.
I know it's not official school committee. It's just helping out in a classroom, but do I need to do anything official relative to that?
No. Any parent can go and volunteer in the buildings, just not acting as a school committee member. That only happens on the dais, or if there's an activity that we're invited to in that building. Other than that, you are more than welcome to volunteer in any building that you would like.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Dr. O'Leary? The reasoning behind what? The policy is there so that we are only school committee members when we're here on the dais, and we're not supposed to be going into the schools as school committee members when we're not there invited as a school committee member activity. So, we're only school committee members when we're here in the dais, or if we're invited, for instance, to celebration tomorrow night for the ribbon cutting, if we're invited to a graduation, something like that. Other than that, we should not be going into the buildings without the superintendent's okay. I mean, if we have a problem that you want to solve as a school committee member, you would bring it to the superintendent first and then make the arrangements to go to that building. But, we should not be walking into the buildings as a school committee member.
Yeah, ma'am. I appreciate that. You reiterated the policy, but I'm not sure why that is like that.
Why did I do it this evening?
No, I'm wondering why. Why is that policy like that? What is the fear? What is the risk? What are the benefits and risks?
It's a state law. It's a policy from the state. This was adopted in 2007 by MASC in the state.
I appreciate that.
So, that we don't pull any, any weight as being a school committee member to get things done other than here at the dais.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Lozal?
Just a quick comment to this policy. Whether it's there or not, what happens is citizens, as citizens, we have volunteers, as Kara has said, we have different roles. Never have I went into a system and say, "I'm a school committee member. I'm in official business." But, I'm in the schools 24/7 when I have time, because if it's not the Hall of Fame Committee and the cabinets and the stuff that we do, if it's not donating two-by-fours and plywood to the theater, I'm in the school. If I use, you know, I use it loosely that if I just visit the school, I usually report to the front office, sign in anyways. But, I would never enter the school under, I'm a school committee member, and I think that's what the intent is, is that to do it officially, the proper procedure is to go through the superintendent's office. But, what happens is, people can interpret it that you're going in there as a school committee member, but, you know, it's all in the eye of the beholder. I mean, if you're in the business, usually, the other day, I went in and gave a box of chalk to the principal as a good faith gesture for something that went on with cross-country, which had nothing to do with the school committee, because I was the building committee chairman, and I was in a different capacity. So, I think I understand what the policy is, but I think it's, you know, you live in Southbridge, you have your neighbors working in schools, you see them, you stop, you talk. I'm in Pop Warner Football. We help out with discipline and the youngsters. I know Mr. Montigny and Dana's new here, but, you know, parents and administrators work hand-in-hand with the organization's nonprofit. So, I'm not there as a school committee member, but I am going to be in the school all the time for different situations. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Lozal. Is there anyone else? Seeing none, we'll go on to the next agenda, item number seven, which is reports. We have Representative of the Student Advisory Committee, Ms. Faith Macharia. Good evening.
So, we went to the Cape trip. Thank you for approving that. It was a fun time for all the teams that are involved. The field hockey team actually won their first game in around seven years, which was really great for them. The girls' soccer team tried, and the boys put in a lot of great effort there. The football team won this past Saturday against North High School, and it was 28 to 6. The girls' cross-country team, which is actually the first time they actually have 10 girls, they usually have less or actually none, and this year, they're doing great. They actually placed 1 through 10 in their past race two Fridays ago, and they're actually working really hard to make it to a SUICO tournament in the September 24th. Then, today, a select group of students, captains from all the fall sports, went to a conference at the Basketball Hall of Fame in Springfield. It was a great opportunity, and thanks to our principal, all the kids enjoyed it. We got a briefing about the effects of alcohol and drugs on teenagers when driving, not using a seatbelt, texting when driving, and all that. It was really important for all the captains to hear it, and I'm pretty sure they're all going to advise the rest of the kids not to do that. It was great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone have any questions for Faith? Mr. Lozal?
Good job. Just a question. When can we get her nameplate? Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll be moving on to agenda item number eight. I have moved a few things around to make the meeting flow a little better this evening, so we're going to do school committee reports at this time. A, we have curriculum subcommittee. Mrs. Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to announce that I'll be holding our first curriculum subcommittee meeting on Monday, October 15th, 2012, at 7:00 PM in the Larry Hyman Conference Room. The agenda will be set, you know, as the day gets closer, but right now, I just want to, what I'm thinking about that will take place at that meeting is meeting with our Director of Curriculum as well as our Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Team to find out how the subcommittee can perhaps engage and inform parents of the Massachusetts frameworks, as well as the Common Core standards that affect our curriculum. In addition to that, also trying to discover what our role, or what the role of curriculum is in our district's accelerated improvement plan and how we can work to make those initiatives come to be. And then also, I would like to revisit and discuss creationism in the classroom. But, again, as the day gets closer, I will post a formal agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone any questions? All right. B would be Policy Subcommittee. We had our, that would be me, myself, and Mrs. McGlaughlin, and Mr. Wiggins, and Mr. Ely attended this evening, and Mrs. Donovan. And we had our first meeting. We have about 12 policies that we went over this evening that the state is requiring us to update. They're all policies that we do have. We just need to do some tweaking, so we spoke about that this evening. Everybody will get minutes and get packets, so we will be bringing those readings to our October 9th meeting. So, everybody will get everything ahead of time, and if there's any questions, you can contact myself or Mr. Ely on those. All righty. And next, we have C, Budget Facilities and Transportation. That is Dr. Domenico. She is excused tonight, but Mr. Ely, do you have anything?
Yeah, I believe we have tentatively set the Budget Facilities and Transportation Subcommittee meeting for 6:00 PM on October 4th. We'll confirm that with Dr. Domenico over the next 24 hours or so and get the meeting posted, but I believe that's the time and date.
Okay. Thank you. D, Collective Bargaining Subcommittee. That would be Mrs. Principe, and she is also excused this evening. I believe she's in the process of talking with Dave Williams and the SCA to set something up in the very near future. And E is the Community and Family and Community Engagement Subcommittee. Mrs. McGlaughlin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's the Communication, Family, and Community Engagement Subcommittee. We'll get it right. Call it CFCE. We'll just keep it simple. We held our first meeting on Monday, September 17th. We discussed creating a district calendar, some sort of system to make the district calendar and events more cohesive. We discussed how the committee can support objectives in the AIP that the state has approved and identified. There are some areas specific to community and family engagement that we may be able to support and hope to be able to support the school district in. And we also discussed, we're beginning to plan a community-wide celebration of the new school that will be a little bit bigger and a little, a little bit flashier than what's being proposed for Wednesday night's ribbon cutting. And I need to schedule another meeting. I'm looking at the second week of October. I'm just waiting to get some feedback on that, and, but as soon as I have that date, I'll make that available. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number nine, Presentations. A, Southbridge Middle High School Booster Club, Ms. Liz Gendrell.
Good evening.
Can you hear me?
Okay. And thank you for this opportunity to introduce the Pioneer Athletic Booster Association. My name is Liz Gendrell, and I'm the president, and to my left is Kelly Jibo, the vice president, and Lisa Benson, the secretary. Also, Jack Jovan serves as our treasurer. We have reestablished the Booster Club that has been in existence throughout the years, throughout the high school, but we thought it'd be great to reestablish it while we have the new Southbridge Middle High School, and it's been quite successful so far. Our main objective is to provide additional opportunities to the athletes in our teams that's not funded by the Southbridge Middle High School. We're trying to be very creative in doing this. We've had some NFL scholarships recommended to us and Henkel scholarships, in which we've asked some school committee members, some coaches, some administrators, and some teachers to write essays in hopes that we could win somewhere in about $25,000 to $30,000 for our school. So, that would be good if those came through, but at least we got experience to go forward, because these scholarships come through every year for us. We're also want to do things for the kids, like banquets and clinics, so that they can improve their skills with the sports, things that are additional that are not being done at the moment. You can find us on Facebook. We're trying to get up with the times, and our meetings will be held every second Tuesday of the month, with our next one being October 9th, and at 6 o'clock at the Southbridge Middle High School in the cafeteria. We invite you to just kindly support the athletes with a $10 individual donation, and it also includes a membership. By no means do you have to show up at all the meetings or be that participant. You just really show your support to the kids. And at this time, I'd like to introduce Kelly, who's going to talk about our first fundraiser, the Turkey Trot. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. I have a couple notes just because, make it easier. Good evening. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Kelly Jibo, and I'd like to thank you as well for having us here tonight. I am the vice president of the Pioneer Athletic Booster Association, which is quickly picking up its new name, PABA. So, if you hear "PABA" going around, that's who we are. I am a busy mom of three busy daughters, and having one who has graduated from Southbridge High School back in 2009 and played sports throughout her high school career, and now I have my sixth grader who is just as involved, moving up to the new middle high school. This is important to me to pitch in where I can, and this has just prompted my energies to direct, to help me, to help create this new organization. With all of that being said, our kickoff fundraiser is in full creation as we speak. We are planning an event called the Turkey Trot, and keeping with the Southbridge High football tradition, this will be held at McMahon Field on Saturday, November 10th, from 10 to 12. Our hope is to make this a community event. Our plan is to blast the community with tons of publicity. We will be having music fun, raffles, prizes, and just trying to make this a family-friendly event. Our vision is to have everyone, such as teachers, administrators, parents, students, all athletes, anyone and everyone, and including all of you there, to participate or to support. Our hope for this overall fundraiser is just to focus on promoting health, wellness, and fitness, as well as supporting our athletes. So, we hope to see you there, and we hope that you can all help us to support, to spread the word. So, the Turkey Trot. Thank you.
As I'm, I'm sure the kids will be excited about parenting community involvement in the athletics, although they're out there working and they want to do it. It's still nice to see when parents and other folks are there paying attention and investing in it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. We think it's just as important to create that bridge and keep it going. And just on a side note, all of us just flew directly here. We hear so much negative, and we don't want to bring any of that into this, and so it's nice to add some positivity. All of us just flew here from a nice potluck dinner at the new junior or the middle high school for our sixth grader, so that was pretty awesome. So, kudos to them for planning that, too. It was a lot of fun.
Mr. Lozal?
It was a wonderful experience.
It was. It was a great night.
I'd just like to thank you. I think what you're bringing to the Booster Club is enthusiasm, the new building, the new spirit, everything's moving forward. I want you to know that I want to join the Booster Club. I haven't joined it today, but I will be forwarding. If you could just slide one over, I will join, and I will attend your Turkey Trot. Thank you very much. I'll trot.
Mrs. McGlaughlin?
I'll raise, I'll raise Mary Ellen.
Thank you. Mrs. McGlaughlin?
Yeah, thank you. Ladies, I also want to say thank you very much for taking this on. I know it's a tremendous undertaking to kind of build something from the ground up, and I love everything I'm seeing, everything I'm hearing, and I thank you truly for taking this.
Thank you. Mr. Lozal?
I'd like to, you know, Mary Ellen Principe's not here tonight because she had a hip replacement, and I had a hip replacement, but I would challenge her to the turkey race between her and I. If we could raise some money on that, that would be a good idea.
That you can make it personal, and that you can make it raise some more money. That's fantastic.
Here's our official draft poster.
And jot it down so they can see it?
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes, I just want to second what Mr. Lozal, as well as Mrs. McGlaughlin and Dr. O'Leary have said. There's just, now is the time to do something like this, and I'm very proud of you for taking this on. It's what we need. I know you both personally, as well as Lisa Benson, wherever she disappeared to. And I just think that you are the right people to do this the right way, and I'm proud of you, and I thank you for putting the time into this. And my question was, if, I know we were fortunate enough to receive membership forms this evening, but if people in the public are really interested and cannot make the Turkey Trot, what's the best way for people out there to join or support your association, to get a membership form and actually join? How would somebody out in the public do that?
We have forms at the school, at the Southbridge Middle High School. We also have a Facebook page, as I've mentioned.
Okay.
That all they would have to do is kind of send a message, and we would definitely get a form out to them. And we also have a P.O. box. So, any of those, you know, we could certainly get to them.
And you're at the home games.
Excuse me?
And you're at the home games, because that's where you nabbed me.
And we're at the home games. We will be at all the home games. Yes, that's where we got you.
We set up at all the home games. Definitely.
Yes.
And if you hear of anything, please direct them our way, and if any questions, they can always be directed, I'm sure, maybe at the school.
Yeah.
Get redirected to us. And as we grow, we will be able to make things more, put it more out there, be more accessible. But, right now, we're just, we're new, and we're running from nothing. We're building this up from nothing, and total creativity and donations, and we're trying to make a gigantic event with running on little. So, yeah. Any ideas, absolute ones. You can become a member, and you can help pitch in, and we appreciate all support, ideas.
Anything.
Anything, yes.
Mr. Wiggins, did you have a question?
Just a quick one, because I had to be at your organizing meeting, and it was great to see that energy. I know you were trying to pursue creating a 501(c)(3).
Yes. I'm in the process.
You're in the process.
Yes.
So, eventually, any contribution somebody will make, including now, if you get it done before the end of the year, will be tax deductible, correct?
Absolutely. It'll be done before the end of the year.
So, this will all be tax deductible as well?
Right. We've already got our EIN, and we're working on the 501(c)(3).
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Presentation B, Summary of the Opening of Schools, Charlton Street School, Mr. Brian Montigny.
Good evening, Mrs. Woodruff, members of the committee. Mr. Ely, I'd like to take this opportunity to say I was very pleased with the opening of school. There was a lot of effort to make this happen. The parents and students and staff were great in their assistance in making this transition very smooth. Students, I want to give you an overview of what happened on that day. Students in grades one and two reported to the cafeteria. Students in grades three through five reported to the gymnasium. Both locations contained posters with identified teacher names. I was amazed how efficiently and quickly students went to their designated teacher's line. Faculty and staff, including myself, were assigned locations to greet parents and students. Prior to the opening day, all parents were sent letters identifying their child's teacher and particular bus that they were assigned to for dismissal. I want to thank Mrs. Morrow for her diligence in notifying parents before school started. At approximately 8:35 AM on that day, teachers brought students to their respective homeroom. 454 were present. 17 students were absent due to illness or relocation. We identified five students who relocated. Personally, our enrollment is now at 465 students. At approximately 2:40, we need to change some procedures at the end of the day, since the high school's up the road and a number of buses in traffic coming through. So, at 2:40, we dismissed all grade one students in pickups, and they were designated at the side of the front entrance of the school to be out of the mainstream of the traffic, which we found to be very effective. I assigned two staff members to give outnumbered plackets to parents. In advance, we have identified parents who were going to pick up their children, and I want to thank Mrs. Morrow again for making 95 grade one student identification tags with their name, bus, letter, school, address, teacher name. In addition, all other grades two through five walkers and parent pickups were dismissed at the main entrance of the school. At 2:45, all bus students, buses A, B, C, and D, YMCA bus and a van, were dismissed to the respective areas. We divided the buses into two sections, the cafeteria and gymnasium for supervision. In summary, we are looking at our dismissal procedures. We do have a heavy load of traffic on Evergreen Street, but it was, we've been tweaking it at first, that there was a little backup, but I just want parents to be patient and know that it's for the safety of the children, and dismissal procedure's been going well. Within 10 minutes, everyone has left the area, and the buses are on one side of the school, and the pickups and walkers are on the other side of the school. We had a positive team effort to make this happen. This isn't an easy task to accomplish, but I have to say, after 14 openings, I found this to be very smooth, especially when we had another 100 students. And this is for the effort of faculty, staff, the business manager, superintendent, the police department- police department, DPW for posting additional signs and traffic flow markers in the road, the maintenance department, and a special thank you for the PTA for sponsoring a very successful AM open house prior to the beginning of school. Just a reminder, this Thursday is our open house from six to eight. Please visit the PTA book fair located in the cafeteria. Thank you.
Any questions? Mrs. Donovan?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Montigny. Nice to see you again. My question is relative to the picking up of first graders. You mentioned the placards. Do, I'm just not, I'm not there, so I'm just curious. Do parents physically get out of their cars to pick up their students or do the cars queue up with those signs?
Yes. They come out, they come out and they'll bring the placard.
So they need to park and then go in the school and get their child?
I have two staff members there and of course, all first graders are bus too, so as far as pickups, we have probably twenty-four students being picked up. And they're on the side of the main entrance of the school away from the main where everyone leaves. So at 2:40, the first graders are out in a timely fashion.
So you dismiss them first and their parents get them with the placards?
That's correct.
And then the two through fives get dismissed after them?
Yeah.
From that same location?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Same location and the parents have to sign and we're getting to know who they are and we have their license plate numbers.
Okay. I can see where traffic would be an issue then. There's not a whole lot of room to begin with.
You know, quite frankly, it would be easier if parents just went up to the upper field area to park and just walk over. We have a lot of parking space. We can't accommodate everybody on one road on Evergreen. And the police and DPW were diligent in having one-way signs posted, but what happens, there is a little backlog. I also encourage parents to park in cemetery roads. They can go in and exit. They can go up on the upper playground, on the upper fields and, you know, Evergreen Street itself. One side of Evergreen has to be no parking at all or else there'll be a real logjam.
Right.
But, you know, quite frankly, students are picked up right at the entrance of the school, basically.
Yeah.
And I have two staff members there out there and a lot of times, I'm out there myself.
Okay. Obviously, safety is our number one priority, so I am assured that you're doing the right thing.
Actually, because years ago when I came to Charlton Street, students used to be dismissed on Gulfwood Road. And it's good that we changed that the first year I was there for their safety because if they, they go to Gulfwood, they have to cross two streets and especially now with the traffic increase. So, we're still looking at it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Montigny. Presentation C, summary of the opening of school, West Street School, Mr. Dana Lab.
Good evening. What's coming around to you right now is just a snapshot of West Street School, a couple of headlines on there and some upcoming events that you might want to take a look at. Dear members of the school committee, thank you very much for allowing me the opportunity to review the opening of school with you and celebrate a few of the bright spots that we had. After a very successful orientation, which I want to thank the PTA for, West Street School opened its doors for the first time in several years as a grade one through five neighborhood school. West Street School welcomed four hundred and fifty students on September 4th. Our current enrollment total that day was actually four hundred and seventy and we had twenty students absent. As of today, our enrollment is four hundred and seventy-one. All students were encouraged to eat a breakfast in the cafeteria and then after we shoot away some of those parents that didn't want to leave, you know, letting their first graders go and reminiscing on the neighborhood schools, we had the first and second graders remain in the cafeteria. We had the third graders report to the main hallway by the, by the front office area and we had the fourth and fifth graders report to the gymnasium. Each homeroom teacher had a placard designated in an area of a spot where the pickup locations were and at 8:33, they came to retrieve their students. The system continues to be effective, so it therefore has stayed in place. We were a little concerned about how we were going to divide up the students for morning, but it's worked out rather nicely. The day was spent with teachers going over their schedules and expectations, walking the students to and from the restrooms into their specials, and also reviewing fire drills and routines. I was also helping out with drying homesick tears and helping the students count their change at lunch. Bryant and I decided it was best to stagger the release times to allow the first graders and their siblings to exit from the building first. Walkers were released to the upper field near the gymnasium and bus students were released to the cafeteria. This also included any siblings that were going to be leaving with the first grade. Walkers, after the first grade was released, walkers were, for each of the other grades and the bus drivers from grades two, the bus riders from grades two and five were released at 2:45. Bus people went to the cafeteria and the walkers for grades two and five went out through the side exit. Although there were many, certainly many hiccups and I need to reexamine a couple areas as well, I did feel that with two weeks on the job, we pulled off a pretty incredible opening and it was certainly not without the support of the staff, the parents, the students, Southbridge Police and Fire, district administrators, and members of the school committee who all played a vital role in the success and were huge support. So with sincere gratitude, I want to thank you for that. Do you have any questions for me?
Anyone have any questions? Mr. Lazo?
I, I have no questions as far as performance on the opening of both of the schools. Just one concern, how is the noise factor with the remediation of the boiler room?
To be honest with you, that has not been an issue at all. I've had, I've had no scent. They've, they've come and checked on it once or twice and communicated with me and it's been, it's been great actually.
Excellent, thank you.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Hi.
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
Question, how is traffic, how are you managing traffic now? Are you having any residual issues?
I mean, there's always going to be some issues, I think, just the way that the school's actually laid out. We don't have a large circular driveway like you see nowadays, so we've really tried to dedicate that spot to buses, especially now that the bus situation seems to be a little more manageable than it's been in the past, four to five buses and then a couple of smaller buses. So, people have been respectful for leaving that area open. I think the only issue we're currently running into is cars that park on the opposite side of the road facing the wrong direction, but for the most part, people are pretty clear that the cars need to line up going up West Street with the passenger door facing to the right. We did have similar issue with the first graders being released. It's, it's a work in progress. We, originally, my intention was to have kind of like a queue where they could just come up, show their placards and we could walk the students out from the upper area out to the cars. With the parking situation and people idling for spots, I didn't want to be out there, you know, telling people they needed to move if they weren't picking up a first grader. We're going to try and reserve a couple spots at the top of the hill, but there is some parking spots at the top of the hill where it does allow for parents to park behind staff members that are still in there. So it's been okay, I think, as far as that's concerned and parents have been great about helping us out with that. But again, that's going to constantly have to be reevaluated.
I, I think it's just, you know, these schools are seventy, eighty years old. They were built at a time when a lot of people didn't own automobiles and when they were truly neighborhood schools and I think, you know, I think this is something that the district will continue to look at, the principals will continue to look at and work on. There's just a lot more traffic, a lot more people are picking up their kids. I'd say give the buses a try, if you can.
We'll work on it and that's, that's something I want to dedicate, you know, my summer to next year is, is working with parents on that and getting some feedback.
Mr. Lazo?
To the comment of the schools and the age, I'm glad that the building committee informed, studied the whole system and we saw that as a deficiency from day one building schools, not so much the original school, but when we added to the plan and put it up against the sidewalks as Charlton Street's built on the corner, we have recreation, West Street has a lot of recreation, but it's on the field. The town fathers, when they went for that three-part system, that would have been the solution to all, but it didn't pass. But when the high school, middle school, high school went through, that was one of the impacts of, if you noticed, we're enjoying Main Street without six hundred and seventy-five kids dropping at three o'clock. The public has known, noticed it already, that it's a big difference. I think, to, to, kudos to the staff and even the police department for the job they do on those tight quarters and we do have tight quarters, especially in Charlton Street. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Lab. Presentation D, summary of the opening of school, Southbridge Middle High School, Ms. Tammy Pearl.
Good evening, everyone. You know, I actually took a different, a different approach on this, this presentation for you because I think that the opening is still happening. So, I wanted to give you as much information as I could about ongoings right up until today. So, it's, it's not too lengthy, but, but I think it's important. I'm on the, the communication committee with Ms. Laughlin and Ms. Donovan and, and so I think more is better in this case. So, I, I first wanted to thank the administrative assistants that we have at the Southbridge Middle High School, Nita Brunel, Donna Power, Kay Krikorian, DeeDee Power, and Christina Cook for what they have done for us for the last six weeks. It's been, it's been an undertaking and we've all done it together, so it's been, it's been lovely. We opened our doors on September 4th to a total enrollment of one thousand three students and today, we have one thousand forty-three, which is, I believe, about one hundred over what the combined enrollment was of last year. So we're already at one hundred students more than last year. So those students are coming back to Southbridge. We opened, well, as of today, we had five hundred and forty-eight middle schoolers and four hundred and ninety-six high school students. Our opening day was very successful. We made sure we had a photographer out front taking photographs of this memorable day as to place those photos in the time capsule. There was, the police chief was there, numerous school committee members were there. It was really a feeling of community. I was actually personally opening car doors and welcoming our, our sixth graders who were terrified to come to the big school for the first time and, and the families, I think, were really assured that we were all there for their children. So it was, it was just a wonderful day out in the plaza if you, if you were there. We then held our open house on September 20th and I have some data for that. We had the families take the, the students' schedules on their way into the building as to account for the attendance rate. So, we were able to, to create some percentages there. Of the five hundred and forty-eight middle school families or students, we had two hundred and fifteen of those students represented, represented by their families, which was thirty-nine percent. Of the four hundred and ninety-six students at the high school, we had one hundred and nineteen student families represented, which was twenty-four percent. So, averaged that out and it was thirty-two percent of our student body's population was represented by families that night and it was wonderful. And we, we actually had to make numerous announcements a half an hour after the event ended to ask people to go so our custodians could clean. So, people loved the night. It was a wonderful, wonderful evening. We've had a couple little bumps in the road, but they really just have been bumps and I wanted to be honest and frank because it's part of the open. So, I know, I know some people are talking out there and I wanted to be able to, to give some assurance. Lockers, the locker issue is, is absolutely being addressed. Mr. Lazo and Mr. Ely have certainly been on this, this issue with us. We are adding twenty-six more lockers by a little bit of a redesign. I won't say flaw, but it wasn't perfect, so we are getting twenty-six more lockers and all students will have them and we will get even more creative if the enrollment increases, which I am sure that it will. So lockers have most certainly been addressed. For those of you who get Fox News, buses, the buses have been a concern and I can assure you, every phone call I have gotten about buses or about a concerned parent at the building level, we have most certainly handled. I have called myself or my assistant principals have called and we have documentation of those phone calls. We cannot have families concerned and worried about the safety of their children. It is taken first and foremost as, as the priority. So, so we actually got on buses ourselves and we spoke to the bus committees or the bus company and, and children have, have been redistributed a little bit and, and they're safe on those buses. We have gone ahead and staggered the dismissal a little bit to account for middle schoolers and high schoolers. They, they're different levels, they have different needs. If you've ever seen a sixth grader at a locker, they take three times as long to open that locker. So they needed some more time for dismissal, so we've staggered the dismissal 208, 210, 212 to get the middle schoolers a little bit more time and to get them out safely on the plaza and on those buses safely before the high school dismisses, which is one big rush. So, we have, we have met with numerous community organizations, Harrington Hospital, U-Wink, Aspira, a recycling program, Nichols College, the Worcester Consortium. We've started building and continued building those relationships with those companies because we're not alone out there. So, so, and many of those, those companies have, have a role in our building, whether it's an office or some sort of counseling or they are contributing to the success of this open as well. We had a fire drill that was unplanned, but went safely and smoothly and we had a little, a faulty smoke detector which caught us all off guard in the middle of lunch. So for the administrators out there, they know that's a good time to, to redistribute the schedule, but everyone got out safely and quickly and it was so very smooth and I praised the student body and the faculty for, for the ease of that transition. And to get to a few good night notes, our Booster Club did speak to our sixth grade potluck which took place tonight right before the school committee and this was a group of teachers who just invited families on their own and families came with crock pots and pizzas and it was just a wonderful family environment. Tomorrow night is our ribbon cutting, which is at 6:00 p.m. at the new Southbridge Middle High School. It'll take place in the auditorium as we're concerned about a little bit of weather. At 6:30, after all of the formalities, there are a number of, number of us who are going to, to offer tours of the new, new middle high school, but we are going to have student council there. Faith and I were speaking about having the student council reps tour the families and the, and the community members around that building because that really, that's really the students' building, so I wanted to encourage that. And again, the community family and community, or excuse me, communication family and community engagement committee that I'm on, we are planning the grand opening for November 17th and that is going to be a building-wide, community-wide celebration, which is going to take a number of people to plan, but we're all looking forward to that. And lastly, into, into communications, we are updating our website weekly with anything and everything that is going on in our building and it includes a weekly snapshot of athletics so we can see what's just going on that week because sometimes it gets a little hairy as to looking at seventeen different schedules, so. So we're trying to make sure our families are aware of, of the ongoings for our building. And that's it.
Any questions? Mrs. McLaughlin?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just want to tell you a kind of a cute story.
Oh, we could use it.
This was the first year that I did not bring my kids to school. I figured new school, new day, they're getting older, they're entering seventh grade, so I'm not going to bring them, so they took the bus. And they came home with a story that they said their bus was packed. It was good though, I mean, it wasn't overcrowded, but it was packed and the kids, as they're driving up to the school, they saw the DPW garage on Gulfwood Road and they're like, is that our school? A lot of kids were asking if that was their school. And my kids were like, no, no, wait, wait till you see the school. You haven't seen the school? And there were a fair number of kids on the bus that hadn't had a tour over the summer. And my daughter said, when they pulled into the driveway and saw the school, some kids thought it was like the Emerald City. They said, actually, Mom, kids gasped. They gasped. They said they couldn't believe that the school was built, that it was there for them, that it was located in Southbridge and it was just a sweet moment, I thought. And it really touched my kids and it touched me. So, very exciting times and I hear things are going well.
Thank you.
I'm excited.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mrs. Donovan?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pearl, for coming.
You're welcome.
First of all, kudos to you and your staff. I think you're all off to a wonderful start. And I'm proud of you. Second of all, I was able to attend the open house on September 20th and I have to say that I walked away so impressed, so excited for the children in there. The teachers that I met, both on the high school side as well as the middle school side, were so genuinely pleasant. They, to me, it was very obvious. The teachers that I met, both on the high school side as well as the middle school side, were so genuinely pleasant. They, to me, it was very obvious that they loved what they do, and they were very excited to be there, they're very excited to teach, they're very excited about their new technology and their surroundings and all their capabilities. I had a, met a math teacher who was practically jumping out of his shoes. I kept looking at his shoes because I swore the feet were going to jump right out of there. It was such a wonderful, wonderful experience.
Thank you.
To see so many parents, because where I was, there was a tremendous turnout, to see that much support for their kids, support for the teachers, support for the town, it was just a wonderful, wonderful evening, and people need to know that is a great facility with great people inside. And you certainly don't walk away from an open house thinking, "Huh, I'm pulling my kid out, there's no way I'm going here." It was the complete antithesis of that, how great it is, how lucky our kids are that we have provided this learning environment and opportunity to them. So, kudos to you, kudos to everybody who played a role in getting that building and getting those people in place. I was very, very pleased. I do have two questions.
Sure.
My first question is, if you could just enlighten us on the late buses. I know there might be a little confusion on that, and I was wondering if you could also, in addition to that, rather than just giving the time, could you give the location of drop-offs relative to those late buses?
Okay, yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Currently, we have two late buses, and we will always have two late buses. The times right now are four o'clock and 5:30, and I'm going to speak to both of those times. The four o'clock bus is an academic, maybe a clubs and activities, a discipline bus. The 5:30 is an athletics bus. So, if you are on cheer and you practice until 5:15, you take the 5:30 bus. So, it's the practice athletics bus at 5:30. I actually did speak to the bus company today, and I'll plan on speaking more with Mr. Ely and Mr. Wigan as well, about reverting back from 4:30 to 3:30. That was the original plan, but due to costs and a fairly large increase of cost, we had to move it to four o'clock because 3:30 is a very busy time for the bus company, and they were looking to charge us $200 additionally each day to come a half an hour early, which I estimated to be somewhere around $40,000 in costs. So, we went ahead with the four o'clock bus. But I did speak to the bus company today, and I haven't even had a chance to talk to Mr. Wigan. We're going to move that back to 3:30.
Honestly, call $40,000.
They actually didn't, when we discussed the cost, she seemed a little surprised by the cost and didn't want to charge us that additional 200. And she even said the bus driver would probably appreciate to get home a half an hour earlier. So, we'll finalize all of that.
If I may, I actually had the chance to meet with Linda.
Oh, perfect.
Earlier this morning as well.
Perfect.
And I concur. I think the negotiations have been successful.
Yay!
So, I believe we'll be able to move the bus back at no change in cost.
Oh, my teachers are going to be so thrilled.
It'll be 3:30 rather than 4:00.
It'll be 3:30. Oh, that's wonderful, yeah. We have so many teachers who want to stay after with the students and help them, and they will donate their time, but an hour and 45 extra minutes of their day was a lot to ask, and so there were some who were doing that, and I, we were just trying to change it. So, we'll change that back to 3:30. We'll probably say maybe next Monday, starting next Monday.
Okay, so my follow-up question to that was, if your child is on that late bus, how does he or she get home?
Okay. The late bus picks up at the school, at the basketball entrance, where currently their blue benches, but it's being worked out, it's being worked out to get those to be red. But they pick up right there, and they do wait sometime. I actually watched it today, as a matter of fact, so they do wait. I would say at least five minutes for anyone who trickles out. And then I believe they take a whole route all through the community to get them home.
Again, if I may, what they have established is some neighborhood stops, so we don't necessarily, obviously, we can't stop at every child's house, and it could be different each day, but we've established some neighborhood stops, and I honestly can't tell you precisely what those are. I wasn't prepared to have those with me, but we can certainly get those for the committee.
I think that's important.
And actually, we probably should publish them.
Please.
We probably should publish them as well, I think, yeah.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. Even for my own, well, I don't want to just say me, 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 but I think it's very important for parents to know if their child, for whatever reason, even if it came up during the day, that they needed a late bus.
Yes.
That that parent needs to know that they will not be dropped off at their normal drop-off location, that they will be at some other central location, and then will have to worry about getting from that location home. So, I think it's very important that we identify what those drop-off locations are and get that out.
Absolutely, and we can put those on our website as well, the school website as well.
Okay, that's terrific.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we're moving on to Agenda Item 10, Report of the Superintendent, A, the Grand Opening Ribbon Cutting Ceremony in Celebration.
I actually have a number of things that aren't on here, but let me talk about the grand opening ribbon cutting ceremony. It's a very formal ceremony. It'll take place beginning promptly at 6:00 tomorrow. We had planned it and are still planning it for both the auditorium in the auditorium and on the plaza, but the weather looks like it's going to be pretty negative, so we are contemplating we'll probably have it inside in the auditorium with the ribbon cutting itself on the stage, and then the seating for folks who want to come. The entire community's welcome to that. We have invited about 100 people who have been involved in this process from the beginning, all the people who were on the school committee before and now, all the people who were on town council before and now, all the people who've been on the building committee, I think, throughout the last several years, all the people from the state, MSBA. It seems like we've invited everybody up to and including the President of the United States. So, we don't know right now exactly how many people are going to be there that we've invited personally. I think at last count, we had about 40 who had responded, which is, you know, roughly half. We think we'll have at least half those people there, and then the entire community is welcome as well. The plan right now at the ribbon cutting would be, I would do basically a welcome at 6:00 promptly, then turn it over to our band and choir to sing, to singer play the National Anthem, as well as the alma mater of the building, of the school. So, and then it'll go into a program of speakers, relatively short speeches, typical of Senator Moore and Mr. Lazzo, and as the Chair of the Building Committee, and MSBA Executive Director, I think his name's Jack McCarthy, and Representative Durant have all confirmed that they're going to be there, and they'll be speaking, but that's about it for the formal speaking. We're anticipating actually cutting the ribbon right at 6:30. So, that tells you the speeches will be relatively short. And then we'll finish that ribbon cutting with the fight song by our band, and then follow that with tours, and I am very glad to hear that the student council will be leading those tours because my arthritis in my foot is killing me. So, we're very happy to have that celebration. This is, again, a formal celebration. Generally happens during the day, but we chose to move it into the evening so more people could participate and attend, and you'll hear more later about the plan for the community-wide celebration. It's going to last a lot longer than a half hour. Getting into the second part of this, which is the opening of the school summary, obviously you heard from three of our principals this evening, Principal Shaw at Eastford Road School, they're having their open house tonight, so she will be at the next meeting to talk about the opening of Eastford Road Early Childhood Center. I will tell you that the principals and their staff have done an amazing job of getting these buildings ready. You know, there were many people sitting up here a year ago when we made the decision to reconfigure the elementary schools at the same time we were opening the middle high school, and talked about whether or not we were capable or had the capacity to do all of that at once, and I think we've shown that we do. We're not perfect. We certainly, if we had to do over again, may change a couple of things, but overall, if you think about, we have moved roughly 155 teachers totally out of the classrooms they were in a year ago. We maybe have five or six teachers who were left in the classrooms that were a year ago. Everybody else has moved in this district. So, we've moved the entire district around, created new schools, created a new environment for our students to learn, and that's taken a lot of work from the principals, their staff, up to and including Mr. Wigan, his staff, and my staff of directors and curriculum directors. And even to the point at which some of us were out handing out schedules on the first day of school, helping out with the building administrators, and other building administrators were at West Street, helping Mr. Lab get things going in his building, and other people were at Eastford Road when they opened that school, and then I know that Bryant didn't need any help, because Bryant's got it down to a science in that building with his staff. But I was there, I did go over, and I know a couple of other administrators dropped by to see if he needed help. So, this has been a team effort, and I think it speaks a lot to the team of administrators we have in this district, and the teachers, and their, the secretarial and administrative assistant staff that we have, the work that they've done, and I do appreciate it. We have had a positive opening. We've had, we have 19 buses going to our middle high school. We had one bus that was not overcapacity but was crowded. That I know, as soon as Ms. Pearl found out about it, we found out about it, we had the bus company looking at it and fixed the problem within a day or two. We have had tremendous cooperation from the police department in terms of getting, and the DPW, getting the crosswalks painted and getting signs up and having police officers on duty. It's been a town effort to get this to work. You know, one of the issues we've had at the middle high schools, we have, in our elevators, we have a button that if you're riding the elevator and you push the emergency button, it sends up like red, rockets red glare, and the fire department's come running to your building three times today, I think. So, we have to get our students to understand that their, a little action that they may think is funny sets off a chain reaction within town to get emergency personnel out to that building. What I was impressed with is the first fire drill that happened was because of the dust collecting around a sensor. When I got there, and I didn't know we were having this problem, I was just going to the building to do a meeting, and I go up and the kids are lined up, and the teachers are right there with them with their grade books, just the way you're supposed to do in a regular fire drill. The fire trucks had been there, but what I found out later was that the students were already in those places by the time the fire department got to the building. That building was evacuated. They'd had a walkthrough, I know previously, but that building was evacuated during that, not emergency, but could have been an emergency, before the fire department arrived at the building. And the students were extremely orderly, and I think it's a testament to the staff in that building, the preparation that they could took, and the work they did with the students to get them to where they needed to be. So, I think we've had a very positive opening, and I think there are things we will tweak between now and next year that will make things even better. We'll continue to look at things and work hard to make sure that the problems that we had this year do not occur again. We learn from our mistakes, and we move forward. Thank you.
Any questions, comments? Mrs. Donovan?
Yes, thank you. Two questions. The police that are on duty, I know some of the elementary schools have them just to facilitate with crosswalks and crowding of cars and things like that. Will they remain the entire school year, or is this, we're still trying to get some of the bugs out now and then that will go away?
No, the police are assigned to the elementary schools as long as the police chief feels they need them. I think we're probably about seeing the end of that. We have a police officer, though, assigned to the middle high school full-time in a cooperative effort between the town and the school district. It's in the budget the school committee passed last year for this purpose, to have a school resource officer in the building, so he will be there all year, but the general police officer who are around these elementary schools will not be there.
Okay, thank you. And my second question was, well, a comment, and then the question will follow. Obviously, this, everything that we're doing now is new, and it's new for everybody, and obviously, because it's new, there's still a lot of bugs that need to be taken out and things that need to be tweaked. If I could, Madam Chair, through you to Mr. Ely, if you could somehow maybe let the public know what would be the proper chain of command, so to speak, if people run into bugs, or, you know, who should they contact first to avoid maybe you getting barraged or getting the word out there through the proper channels?
It actually came out in our, was it CFCE? The CFCE committee, subcommittee. What we have done, and I know Mr. Wigan took a look at this yesterday, and I've been working on it for a couple of days, we have tried to anticipate and remember all the things that have come up, and what we are doing now is we're creating a, almost a grid of who do you call, sort of like Ghostbusters. Who do you call if you have this problem? It's this person in this position at this phone number in this email address. So, for everything that we've run into so far, and then we would just add to that. Our plan would be to, once we finalize this, right now, my administrative assistant has it to fill in some of the blanks in terms of email addresses and phone numbers. We would then put that, publish that on our website and on the different pages of the different schools, so that if somebody does run into a problem for busing, they know exactly who to call and what the protocol is to who to call first and then who to call next. So, we are working on that as we speak.
I think that's fabulous. I think that's what we need, and I think parents, they may automatically think that they have to run to you first or call Fox News first, rather than going through the proper channels or perhaps identifying the right person at the right time. So, if we could fulfill what you're doing, I think that's fabulous. Get it out there for people to know, and I think that's a great start for communication.
Our hope is to have it out this week.
Thank you.
Mr. Lazzo?
Who is in charge of the busing?
Right now, Mr. Wigan works with the bus company on the busing. However, if there's a bus problem, it is really best handled with the building principal. Building principal, once they become aware of it, if they can't handle it directly with the bus company themselves, they would go to Mr. Wigan.
Okay. When I got the bus complaints, and I saw the pictures, and then I saw the Fox News report, and the research in the state, they came up with that it is the superintendent, the safety officer, and the bus company. And I turned around and said, "Well, if that's the protocol," I guess a parent called in and they're saying this, that, and the other thing that you said, "It wasn't your job." But I'm confused because if that's the protocol, does the safety officer come to play at some point because of the safety issue? Nobody told me it was an administrator's job to do anything on the busing when I researched it. They all pointed to the front office and bus company and the safety officer.
Let me answer that, because are you talking about the school's resource officer?
Whether that's your safety officer or if it's the police department, there has to be a safety officer, superintendent of schools. If you delegate it to, say, Terry, which if that's what, you know, it is, it is, and the bus company, because there has to be a contact person for the district. There has to be a safety officer that is in charge of public safety on what's the law, because I'm sure that you're not a police officer and neither is the administrator. And I think putting it on to the administration, I didn't understand that portion.
Most of these don't end up being major safety issues. Quite frankly, working with the bus company and seeing the pictures ourselves, there's some question from the bus company whether those pictures are loading and unloading students, which is why students are up. We don't know, because we don't have the context of that picture. But what I will say is, most of the issues we deal with with busing are kid maybe getting missed at a stop or getting dropped off at the wrong stop. That kind of stuff handles through the building principal most often.
Absolutely, absolutely.
But in terms of just capacity, that really is dealt with mostly with Mr. Wigan and the bus company.
Right. All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Mrs. McLaughlin?
I just want to say, there was a policy subcommittee meeting earlier tonight, and in preparation for that, I looked at some policies relative to busing, and we have, our policy indicates Mr. Wigan is the point person for busing as far as route issues and administrative issues, and the building principals are the ones responsible for conduct on the buses. That's the way our policies are written. If we need to add a safety officer, that's something we'll have to revisit.
I'm not talking about conduct, and I'm not talking about bus routes. I understand that we formulate the bus routes. Terry did a very good job with all the shakeup we had in town. What I'm talking about is, I saw the pictures. Some of those students were my players. They told me about it because we take buses every weekend. He says, "How come this bus isn't like the one I take to school?" And I was like, "Why?" And then when he told me, I said, "Well, I'll bring it up at the meeting, we'll talk about it," because the safety issue is when a bus does something against the law, and that's what I'm talking about. I'm not talking about the scheduling or somebody misbehaves, or Mr. Montigny has to go onto the bus. We're very, that happens frequently, and it's just discipline, you know? I'm talking about safety issues itself. Thank you.
Anyone else? Moving on to Agenda Item Number 11, Report of the Business Manager, Mr. Wiggins?
Your report.
Thank you, Mr. Wiggins. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 12. Thank you, Mr. Wiggins. Moving on to agenda item number 12, school committee actions. Action A, we need a motion to vote to approve the before and after school program. Do I have a motion?
I make the motion.
Thank you, Mrs. McLaughlin. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Donovan. We have a motion and a second to approve the before and after school program. Any discussion? Mrs. Donovan?
Yes, thank you. Just a question as to why we're doing this. I know at the last meeting, we had a presentation from Mrs. Allen that talked about the before and after school program and said that it was going to be funded through Title I funds. And I know there was some discussion as to whether or not it needed a vote. And am I just assuming that that research was done and we do in fact need to vote on it even though it's a done deal through Title I?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Seeing no further discussion. Can we have a roll call, please, Max?
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Lozo?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Five yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Item B, we need a motion to vote to approve an anonymous donation in the amount of $200 to Charlton Street School. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Lozo. Do I have a second?
Second that.
Thank you, Mrs. McLaughlin. Any discussion? Seeing none. Max, can we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Lozo?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Five yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. C, we have, and we need a motion, moved that the school, the Southbridge School Committee sponsor a community-wide grand opening celebration for the new Southbridge Middle High School to be held on Saturday, November 17th, with times to be determined by the Communication and Community and Family Engagement Subcommittee. Be it further moved that the Southbridge School District solicit donations of money, goods, and services to offset the cost of said grand opening celebrations. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Lozo. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Donovan. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Lozo?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Five yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Agenda item number 13, unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business this evening? Mr. Lozo?
Just, I didn't know whether you wanted me to do this on the committee reports, but I just wanted to comment on the school building committee as we wind down. I figured under unfinished business would be cleaner. I'd just like to report that the punch list is being knocked down to zero, under 27 at the last meeting. We solved the locker dilemma, the missing lockers, as they call them. The tall lockers were counted as two instead of two small lockers, which would add to the 26 lockers. So we're going to continue to work on the locker issue. And I think that as, as our school expands and as we knew before we built it and we fought and tugged, with a tug of war with the state for more space because we thought we would have more students coming back, we predicted that would be up to capacity when we turn the key. And we turned the key and we're up to capacity. I know that we're doing some collaborative work and some other stuff up there for the time being. But again, it's a good thing that we have a, the former high school as they move over to the new building as far as administration. I know they've been moving and stuff. There's always options for the future, to things that you can work on. We're not boxed in. We do have space inside the system. But as far as the building committee, we still meet on Tuesday. We have a few of those meetings left. And I think we're going to be meeting into the spring as far as the full committee because the fields will not be turned over to us till springtime from what I understand. So the report is, we're on time, we're on the budget. I know that Terry Wiggins, if I may say, has done a fantastic job of squeezing the dollar on this one. There is a lot of moving and shaking with the money. What can we do? What can't we do? What's the state regulation? I think that the team, Chris Clark and everybody has, you know, we've all come to the table and compromised and agreed and disagreed. But I think we're on time, on the budget, and we're looking forward to the ribbon cutting. And from here on out, I'm sure that we're going to be continuously working on our school system. We just have a great facility up there. And I think that the town's excited about it and so are the kids, our staff. If I may, I know everybody was mentioned, but there's just one little group that I think I want to mention because I think we missed them. And that's our maintenance crew and custodial and some help. These were what we call the donkeys pulling the wagon. They were not, in the planning and the management and stuff, I have to say that Mike Como and our summer staff and the maintenance crew, you see the red trucks flying around town, you see the grass being cut. He had to maintain the system as we know it, deep clean the elementary schools, move the high school, and then move the administration. I think that, you know, it's been a great run and it was a test of our system and the team concept as superintendent says. But that's one group that is under the radar and really doesn't get a lot of kudos. So I just wanted to mention that from the chair of the building committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else unfinished business? Mrs. Donovan?
Thank you. I have three items. My first item is that I wanted to thank the athletic director, Brian Davis, and the assistant athletic director, Jan De Gregorio. I know that they came before us and they were kind of under the wire to get that boys and girls soccer team and the field hockey team down to the Cape. And we approved it pending that all the proper paperwork was, was sent in. And I personally, and I'm sure everybody else did too, we received that paperwork at our home prior to the trip, a few days prior to the trip. So I just wanted to thank them and let the people know that they were true to their word and they did follow through and that everything went well and that we heard from our student tonight, Faith, that they were able to go, they enjoyed themselves and actually, you know, had a wonderful experience. So thank you to Mr. Davis and Mrs. De Gregorio for doing that. My second, one of, I guess I'll go to Mr. Ely first. My question to Mr. Ely was, I know that the superintendent's office, the business office, the sped director and curriculum were moving from the upper town hall over to 25 collab. Is that done and what is the status on the telephones?
Well, the move is, is actually still in progress, although we are all located there at this point. The telephones are all there. The problem is they're not ringing where they're supposed to be ringing. So we, I think Mr. Wigan has confirmed that they're working on those actually within the next few days. So we anticipate we'll have phones and I'm going to hope to say by the end of the week. It's been sort of nice not having the phone ring, to be honest with you. But it's getting a little bit old not being able to call out. So we think the, right now, we're keeping that message on our website that our phones are not working properly. So people who have been calling have been getting, I believe, the athletic director's voicemail and they're probably not going to get a call back from that because I'm not even sure he's checking that because I think that's actually still in the building. So, but suffice it to say that the company that we're working with, Charter, is working in Verizon, I know is working with Charter now in effect.
And we have a third company involved as far as the internal wiring. While I, I would just want to respectfully disagree with the superintendent on his date. I do believe it will probably be Monday. The company that actually is to do the internal wiring, rewiring and programming, if you will, will, has confirmed to me they will be in on Monday.
Okay.
Okay. So I would expect that we will have the phone numbers ringing to the various places they need to ring to on Monday.
Okay. So be patient.
Any of them are all working though?
Yeah, yes, that's good. And then my last item, through you, Madam Chair, to Mr. Wigan. I know at our last meeting, we were presented with a list of clubs that we needed to approve, but it appeared that there were some stipends on there. And our minutes reflected that we were going to vote on those at tonight's meeting and I didn't see.
I have to apologize. I was ill and wasn't really able to prepare that for you. So you will see it at the next meeting.
So those clubs don't go into effect until we've?
It is, it is. No, no, I actually have, I told the school principal, had told the school principal actually before that meeting to go ahead and do the preparation to prepare those committees. That's again, really more of an accounting issue, okay, as far as establishing them for student activity accounting, okay? So we'll be fine if we do that at your first meeting in October.
And we have posted those positions, the advisor positions, coaching positions and those sort of things.
Okay. Just a follow-up question. I don't know if it's Mr. Ely or perhaps even our school building principal. How do we let families know what the clubs are, when they meet? Do we put that on a website? Is that on the school website so in case?
That'll be done through the building. It'll be done through the building and on the website.
Okay, okay. All right, I'm go set. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Anyone else unfinished business? Seeing none. Item, agenda item number 14, new business. I have, the next regular school committee meeting will be held on October 9th, 2012 at the council chambers. Is there any other new business? Mr. Lozo?
Several issues. Through the chair to the superintendent. I'm going to start out with the speech pathologist that has been brought to my attention that is not licensed. And I know there's a debate going on about this license. I've been presented a packet that I don't have with me that states from the state that they are not licensed. And this person is, and I don't want to mention any names, is creating IEPs. What happens to this? I know that you've always told me that if they're not certified, you don't appoint them. And we've disappointed because of the lack of certification or license. So can you explain, without going into any personalities of the person, it just, it kind of got me when I saw her. And then when I saw the state data, I was like, can you please explain that to me? That's, that speech pathologist.
I can't do it. But I can certainly talk to you on the side, but I can't do it publicly. We're in the middle of an investigation.
Okay. My second issue is student teacher ratio. At the high school and the middle school, I'm very concerned. I know last year, the former administrators, both at the middle school and high school, requested staff. And I know, for whatever reason, they did not get that staff. I know that the high school took some cuts one year. My problem now is our standard practice in the Southbridge school system in the past has been when you hit 21, you start looking to split it. It gets to 24, then we have to think about getting in other teachers. I know that we have teachers in our middle high school that they're teaching classes that are larger than that. They're up, kicking up towards 30. My concern is, are we budgetarily looking into this? Are we moving forward and alleviating the numbers so we can get our student teacher ratio? And if so, you don't have to do it tonight. What I'd like to do through the superintendent is, if we could just get up through our system, now that we've shaken everybody from one through five, and then we did the six through 12, if we could get a stat sheet on not necessarily which teacher as much as subject and student teacher ratio. I'd like to, because when it comes to, it's not that I'm going to say, well, I think we should do this. Budgetarily, when I go into budget and I see a, say a class with 30 kids to one teacher, I would rather create another teacher in the system so we could alleviate it, even if it was 15 to one. We've been very, very fortunate over the years previously. But now that we've shaken everything up, Eric, I think maybe we should look at as a school committee, what the student teacher ratio is also in the elementary school. Although I'm not getting the complaint from the elementary school. As a school committee member, I would just like to see how that's working.
Sure. We, we actually met, all the administrators met this week to go over staffing across the district. All the, all the principals were there. And we are going to be looking at some additional staff at the teaching level, particularly in science at the high school, middle school, high school level. So we are looking at that as we speak. And I'll leave it at that. Everything else was handled during budget season and there were recommendations that, that didn't get passed, obviously for budgetary reasons. We had to do some cutting. But obviously now with, with some increased student enrollment, we've had to look at that. And now that enrollment has stabilized after the first two weeks of school, we'll start looking to add staff.
Okay. Can you get a report to the school committee on the student teacher ratio by grade, if you could?
I can get that sometime for, in the next week or so.
Okay.
Yeah.
My third issue is, and this has been a complaint by the students and also a lot of the parents, the lunches at the high school. I know that we increased the cost of a lunch. But what some of the kids and parents are complaining about is if you went and had, say, a chicken McNuggets. At the old high school, you used to get six nuggets. Now they're getting three nuggets. So what we've done is we've cut down the portions. And kids are going to practice, kids are leaving school, they're basically starving. That's the words they use. And I just said, and on behalf of students, I'd like to just comment on it. I know it's another area. I know everybody is positive about everything. And I'm positive, I'm a big cheerleader for the new school. But I think what we have to do before these issues become bad issues and negatives, we have to head them off to pass. And that's the way I look at, especially with the lunchroom and stuff. I think that it's a beautiful facility. I think the choices are wonderful. I think the portions have to be looked into. I don't know if that, Terry, that's a state issue or a local issue, but we have to look at it.
I will look into it, obviously. I would say that portions of school luncheons are dictated to us.
Okay.
So I, I, we will look into it however. Because that would be a concern of mine as well if there's a sudden change.
Terry, my biggest concern is we raised the price on the product. So we were under the impression, you know, if we're raising the product, we're trying to keep the same service and all of a sudden we're not getting it.
Agreed.
My fifth, one of my other issues I'd like, if, through the chair to the superintendent or the business manager, a summer feeding program that we just passed. I know that we worked on it last year. I would just like a report back on, I know we were very optimistic on how that was going to work profit-wise. And if we could just have a report back on that, I'd appreciate it.
Mr. Lozo, thank you. What I just wanted to remind is, we have to be very careful of the open meeting laws. So all these things have been, have been discussed and we can put them on an agenda for the next meeting so that we can discuss them fully. Because we're, I've been told that we need to be very careful of what we bring up. If it's not on the agenda, we're not really allowed to speak about it because we'll break open meeting laws. So if you want to send all that to me, we can certainly put all that on the next agenda and we can have full discussions on all those items.
Parliamentary, Madam Chairman, to the chair. Parliamentary procedure allows you under old business, unfinished business or old business or new business, to put requests in under new items. What I tried to do is follow parliamentary procedure under unfinished business would be the running building committee that I talked about. Under new business, I wanted to turn around and bring up some new items for this year. I'm not talking, I didn't expect to talk on it as far as substance as much as request items. And that's what new business is for. I have one other new business, which is an issue that I, it's not an issue of Southbridge schools, it's an issue about our children. I just want the public to know. We don't have committee forum like we used to have. So what I'd like to do is just to do it under new business. It follows parliamentary procedure. It's legal. I'd just like to let the public know that Southbridge Park will honor this Saturday night. Kickoff is at 7:00. The ceremony starts at 6:30. What we're doing is we're dedicating our season to the U.S. Marines. We have the color guard, the national anthem, the flag group, the cable TV. We were informing the press to, to attend. What we're trying to do is, is salute the Marines and our public servants by sending a shirt to one of the Marines in Afghanistan. It would be a Southbridge football shirt with the Marine medallion. And the Peewee team would all have Marine medallions on helmets for the whole season. It's just a tribute to the U.S. Marines and anybody who wants to attend. It's going to be Saturday night under the lights at 6:30. And I thank you very much, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Lozo. Any other new business? Mrs. McLaughlin?
To the superintendent. MCAS scores recently came out. And just a question as to, do you know when the families will be receiving the individual reports?
They went to the schools today.
They did?
Yes.
And they'll be sent, they'll be disseminated from the schools to the?
From the schools, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
We can have a presentation on that?
In October, yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mrs. Donovan?
My question was just relative to subcommittee agendas. Could we possibly have subcommittee agendas as well as subcommittee minutes posted on the website? Or does it exclusively only have to be regular school committee meetings and minutes?
No, we can have some, we can have, we can ask that to be put on the website.
Do I, do you need to make a motion or is that just?
No, no, it's just something that we will add to.
I just think it would be another way for, because I think we have some really great subcommittees going and I think we have a lot of people active and a lot of good things are taking place that will come out of those. And for people who will care and just are not physically able to be there, I just think it'd be a good way to just follow through with what we're doing.
Yes, we can put that on.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Any further new business? Seeing none. We'll move on to agenda item number 15, executive session. Vote to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining for union and non-union personnel or litigation to the extent that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining of litigation position of the governmental body pursuant to chapter 30A, section 21.
So move.
Thank you. Second?